Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask all my colleagues and those in the audience, please silence. There's phones and electronic devices. Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to be respectful of each other. Do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you'll be asked to leave. And if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Royal. Counselor Baker. Here. Counselor Brayden.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara. Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Rell. Quorum, Mr. [?]. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. The introduction of today's clergy is by City Councilor Julia Mejia. Counselor Mejia, please come to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. President Flynn, I just want to know, I have a get out of being late to class pass because I was -- Dr. Hall will explain it all. We are blessed here to have Reverend Dr. Arlene Hall join us this afternoon to open up the City Council meeting in prayer. Before I go into her bio, I just wanted to thank you because on the Labor Day weekend, I ended up going to your church. And I found myself there because God always has a way to bring me to where I need to be. And because I'm the Chair of Education, I ended up going to your church on the day that you were blessing the educators, the students, and the parents. And I was so incredibly moved by that. And not only that, then we marched over to the Frederick Pilot School, whereas a congregation, you and myself prayed over the school in a very symbolic way. And that while it wasn't just that school, it was the schools for all the children. And that we were praying for this year to be safe and for the teachers to have the love and the support that they need to be able to have a successful year. And it was that moment that inspired me to invite you to be today's clergy because, you know, we're now three or four weeks into school. And I am going to say that the first week of school that I stopped by the Frederick Pilot and I advised them of the prayer session that we had for them, and they were really grateful. So sometimes we do things that people don't know that we're doing them because they're not on social media and they had no idea that you did that for them. So they were really grateful for that. So I just want to say thank you for always showing up and being such a solid pillar in our community. Because in so many ways, we have let go of faith and hope. And that's many reasons why so many of us, right, here in the city of Boston are struggling. So I believe that when we are able to ground ourselves in something good and believe that all things are possible with God or whoever you happen to believe in, that we can make some really good things happen here together. So I'm really encouraged to have the opportunity to introduce you today. So thank you. So Dr. Arlene Hall is an ordained minister of the Church of God with international offices in Cleveland, Tennessee. She is a native of Jamaica, whereas a young woman, she accepted Jesus Christ as her Lord and Savior. In 1990, Dr. Hall entered the call to preach the gospel, graduated from the Church of God ministerial internship program in 1992, and received her ministerial credentials. In 1999, Dr. Hall and her husband Bishop Raymond Hall founded Deliverance Temple Worship Center, a dynamic church in the city of Boston, where God transformed lives, families, communities, and nations throughout their global ministry. Dr. Hall holds a Master of Divinity degree from Gordon Kornell Theological Seminary in Boston and a Doctor of Ministry degree in Pastoral Leadership from the Pentecostal Theological Seminary in Cleveland, Tennessee. Dr. Hall serves on several boards in the community of Boston, the Southern New England Church of God, and the Church of God of International Office. After serving on the Board of Directors for the Black Ministerial Alliance of Greater Boston for over 12 years, in 2016, the Board of Directors of the BMA, in a historic move, voted Dr. Hall as the first female and the youngest president of the Black Ministerial Alliance. She is the author of Secret Place Dwellers, her first book published on June 25, 2023. She is a well sought-after after-conference speaker, advisor, and mentor to many women and men in ministry, the corporate and political world as well. In addition to her role as the lead pastor of the DTWC, Dr. Hall is the founder and CEO of Secret Place Dwellers, a nonprofit global organization that God is using to mobilize, develop, and deploy secret place dwellers. That is, women and men who dwell in the presence of God in prayer and become carriers of His anointing. Dr. Hall is the first ministry in her family. She is the wife of Bishop Raymond Hall, the love of her life, and they are grateful parents of Fabian, Xavier, Raymond, Arleil, and Raymond Jr., and the proud grandparents of Anthony and Tru. It is with great honor that we introduce to you all Dr. Hall. Come on down. Thank you. That's right. Give it up, y'all.
Certainly an honor to be here one more time, probably about my fifth or so time, standing before you, grateful for the opportunity. Counselor Woman Mejia, she's just a blessing to Boston. President, God bless you. Let us pray. I want to ground my prayer this morning as I sought the Lord as to what I may share to encourage you, public servant of this great city. And the Spirit of the Lord led me to Psalm 90 and verse 17. And I'll ground my prayers in that. I want to read it in two versions because I think it will speak to your heart. "Let the favor of the Lord, our God, be upon us, and establish the work of our hands upon us." Yes, establish the work of our hands. And one other version, the messenger said, "And let the loveliness of our Lord, our God, rest upon us," confirming the work that we do. Oh, yes, affirm the work that we do. Let us pray. Sovereign God, we love you. We praise you and we honor you. We thank you for life. Hallelujah. We declare that this is the day you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, as I pray for these public servants, men and women that serve the city of Boston and the people of Boston, I ask you, according to the Psalms, that you will establish the work of their hands. You know the district that you have called them to serve. You know the different neighborhoods in the city of Boston that you have called them to see life, to see possibilities, to see the things that you desire to be done. And I ask you that as they carry out your agenda even today, that you will strengthen the work of their hands, that you will strengthen the desires in their hearts, the ideas, the plans, the vision that you have given to them, the proposals that will be presented. I ask you that they will be encouraged, that they will know that their labor is not in vain. So I ask you now that you will open their eyes, hallelujah, that they may see the possibilities in the school system of Boston, that they will see the possibilities for the strategies that are needed in Boston Public School, the safety of our children, hallelujah, the protection for the principals, the teachers, the administrators, and every person that work in every school system in Boston Public School, that they see the possibilities, ah, for the vision, for no more violence in the neighborhoods of Boston, that they will see the possibilities for the answer to homelessness in the city. So as they serve the city, I ask you that you will cover each person and their family, that you will protect them, that they will know as they serve the public that you are watching over their private affairs. I pray for our mayor, Mayor Rue. I pray for our staff and cabinet, that the work that you have called her to do, the work that you have called the city councilors to do, that they will be encouraged this morning, that you are establishing the work of their hands, that you are strengthening and you will sustain beyond their years, the work that you have called them to do right here in the city of Boston. And Father, because you are the God of yesterday, today, and forevermore, we will be careful to give you the praise, to give you the glory and the honor for what you've already done, for what you will do today, and what you will continue to do through each person that serves diligently and faithfully for the well-being of Boston. In Jesus' name, I pray. And everyone say amen. Amen. God bless you all.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to be with you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend, for those inspiring words and the prayer. Mr. Clerk, can we ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Lara is present, Counselor Rell is present? I also want to acknowledge and welcome members of the Boston Fire Department that are with us here today from Local 718, and also many of them are also active in the veterans community throughout Greater Boston. It's good to have you here. We're up to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes, seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter. The chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her on of the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1510. And the second one would be docket 1513. Why don't you read those together, Mr. Clerk?
Document number 1510, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in an amount not to exceed $4 million for costs related to the design and reconstruction of Blossom Street from Cambridge Street to Charles Street. And docket number 1513, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant from the Boston Planning and Development Agency in the amount not to exceed $750,000. Costs will be related to a transportation study examining design changes and improvements that can be made along Cambridge Street, Blossom Street, and North Grove-Cambridge Street intersection.
Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to ask for suspension and passage on both of these matters here. $4 million is a lot of money, but it's money that on projects that are pretty straightforward, the redesign of streets, Cambridge Streets and Blossom Streets. I have to congratulate, but commend you for paying attention to this and make sure that we move the money along. Counsel Durkin, it's in her district, and she was paying attention and asked if we could suspend and pass this. I don't have a problem with it, but I think Counsel Durkin should stand and talk about what will be rebuilt, her opinions, the process or whatever. And the 1513 is actually for the design of the same projects, and then the 1510 will be for construction of those two streets. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for suspension and passage on both and roll calls also.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Baker. After Counselor Durkin speaks, we'll do a roll call on each docket individually. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Baker, and thank you, Council President Flynn, for working with me on this. If anyone has walked down Cambridge Street in my district recently, you've probably noticed a very large construction project and expansion underway on MGH's campus. This new clinical building created a large-scale mitigation for the community, including $4 million to the VPDA to be allocated to the Public Works Department to design and implement the reconstruction of Blossom Street from Cambridge Street to Charles Street. Excitingly, the city also approved capital funds in the fiscal year 2023 budget in the amount of $2 million for upgrades to Blossom Street. It is important to move in earnest in accepting these funds so that the cities needing improvements to this area can occur in coordination with the ongoing construction in the area. Improving pedestrian space for the area is critical. It is an area in constant use every day by residents, patients on their way to and from the hospital, as well as medical workers that make MGH the world-class institution that it is. And I'll just add, so that was mostly on docket 1510. On 1513, part of this large-scale mitigation included $750,000 to the VPDA to be allocated to the Transportation Department to study the design changes to roads in the area. And I'll just add, this isn't money that was up for grabs. This is part of, this was, these funds were talked about in community in regards to the building permit. So this is really mitigation for the community, for the West End. And so I really appreciate if everyone would consider voting to send these funds along so that the streets and so that this money isn't held up and we're able to move in earnest with the construction in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Counselor Baker, on this docket, on 1510, Counsel Baker seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1510, Counselor Royal. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Lara.
Yes.
Counselor Lara, yes. Counselor Louis Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. And Counselor Rell.
Yes.
Counselor Rell, yes. Docket number 1510 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on 1513, please?
Roll call on docket number 1513, Counselor Royal. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Brayden.
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louis Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louis Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Rell.
Yes.
Counsel Rell, yes. Docket number 1513 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1511?
Document number 1511, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,181,789.09 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 21 AFG Health and Wellness awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund safety, training, and fitness equipment to support officer health and wellness.
This docket, 1511, it will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1512, please.
Document number 1512, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1 million in the form of a grant administration for children and families awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund childcare for homeless children and to provide training to providers offering these services.
Thank you. This docket, 1512, it will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1514 to 1518?
Document number 1514, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $533,200 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 prosecuting cold cases using DNA awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund an increase in the number of cases where suspect DNA was identified and an increase in the number of convictions resulting from prosecution. Document number 1515, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $317,082 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 DNA capacity enhancement and backlog reduction program awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund two criminal positions, overtime, lab supplies, equipment, and continuing education expenses. Document number 1516, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $49,173.60 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 firefighter safety equipment grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the purchase of active shooter response gear, including ballistic vests and ballistic helmets. Document number 1517, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $24,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 port security grant awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund a third-party training consultant to deliver eight half-day, four-hour sessions of Module One of the Harbor Incident Response Training, HIRTNY-002-RESP course. And docket number 1518, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $16,387 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 port security grant program awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund installation of two on-demand site sonar units onto Boston Police Department Harbor Patrol unit vessels.
Thank you. These dockets, 1514 through 1518, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1519 to 1524, please.
Document number 1519, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of Portia Olawo Yowola as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring May 1, 2028. Document number 1520, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of Raymond Liu as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring May 1, 2028. Document number 1521, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of James Canales as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring May 1, 2028. Document number 1522, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of Ramon Soto as a member of the Boston Cannabis Board for a term expiring September 18, 2025. Document number 1523, notice was received from the mayor, the appointment of Eugene Ballinger as a member of the Boston Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring September 22, 2025. Document number 1524, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor upon papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of September 13, 2023.
Mr. Clerk, these dockets, 1519 through 1524, they'll be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1474, 1475.
Document number 1474, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 24 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $27,357,626 to provide funding for the Boston Fire Department for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 718. Document number 1475, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Fire Department for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $27,357,626 to cover the fiscal 24 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 718. The terms of the contracts are July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 3%, 3%, and 2.5% to be given in July of each fiscal year of the contract term.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Rell, the Chair of City Services, Innovation Technology. Counsel Rell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The committee held a public hearing on dockets number 1474 and 1475 on Monday, September 25, 2023. The committee was joined by Lou Mandarini, Senior Advisor for Labor, and Jim Williamson, Budget Director for the city of Boston, all of whom provided testimony on behalf of the administration. We was also joined by the members of Local 718. He was also in the building with us today, Sam Dillon, Leroy Hayward, the Vice President, and Randy Greeley. The contract is retroactive beginning in July 2021 and will last until June 2024. The city will reopen negotiations with Local 718 this spring to finalize a new three-year contract. Other than wage increases, there were language changes which modified hours of work and overtime, officer and rank coverage, and sick leave, which allow more flexibility for firefighters when they take leave from work. The committee heard public testimony from Sam Dillon, President of Local 718, who expressed the union's support for this contract. The committee also discussed various topics, including language changes related to parental leave, diversifying BFD personnel, the health and safety of Boston firefighters, military leave reform, the need for the funding of CAR V, constructing a fire station in Charlestown, and creating position in the BFD that specialize and respond to lab-specific emergencies. And I forgot to mention that we was also joined by my colleagues, Counsel Louis Jean, Counsel President Ed Flynn, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Murphy, and sorry for missing, Counsel Coletta as well. I'm sorry for missing anyone. But as Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, I recommend moving the listed dockets from the committee. the listed dockets from the Committee to the full Council for discussion and formal action. And at this time, my recommendation to the full Council would that the matters ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell, and thank you for a quick turnaround, a quick hearing, and bringing this to the floor. Counsel Worrell, the Chair of the Committee on City Services Innovation Technology seeks acceptance of the Committee report in confirmation of docket 1474. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1474, Counselor Royo. Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara? Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
C.
Counsel Mejia, C. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Document number 1474 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counsel Worrell, the Chair of the Committee on City Services Innovation Technology seeks acceptance of the Committee report in confirmation of docket 1475. Mr. Clerk, let's do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 1475, Counselor Royo. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara? Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia? Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Document number 1475 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 1293.
Document number 1293, communication was received from the City Clerk of the--
[inaudible]
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we want to say thank you to the men and women of the Boston Fire Department for their professional work throughout the city, for your advocacy, and for your being involved in so many organizations and helping build this city and help building this country. So thank you to the men and women of the Boston Fire Department in Local 718. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can we continue on to docket 1293, please?
Document number 1293, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding inclusionary zoning changes to the Boston zoning code.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter was sponsored by the Mayor and referred to Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation on August 9th, 2023. We had, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation held a public hearing yesterday, September 26th, to take testimony and consider the same. We had a good turnout yesterday. Myself, President Flynn, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Braden, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worrell, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louie Jen, Counsel Flaherty, and Counsel Mejia attended. Thank you all, by the way. The Administration's representatives were off, the Jemison Chief of Planning, BPDA, Sheila Dilling, Chief of Housing, and Amy Chambers, Director of Planning for BPDA. They made a presentation, which is attached, on the components and particulars regarding the inclusionary zoning changes to the Boston zoning code. The presentation included background, history, history on inclusionary development policy, current IDP requirements, outcomes of the IDP, current status, housing condition report, a recommendation for inclusion and rezoning, a feasibility study, the text amendment to the zoning code, and the next steps in implementation phases. Based on the documentation and information, information and testimony presented at the hearing and after review examining all considerations to the same, I respectfully recommend that a roll call vote be taken that this matter ought to be accepted as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker seeks acceptance of the Committee report in passage of this docket, which is 1293. Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote on docket number 1293, Counselor Royo. Counselor Baker?
Nay.
Counsel Baker, nay. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin?
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty? Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Document number 1293 has received 11 votes in the affirmative and one vote in a negative.
This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1447 and 1450, please?
Document number 1447, resolution calling for a state of emergency at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue and Melnea Cass Boulevard. And document number 1450, order for a hearing to discuss the humanitarian crisis at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue and Melnea Cass Boulevard.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. The Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery held a public hearing yesterday on docket 1447, a resolution calling for a state of emergency at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue and Melnea Cass Boulevard, and docket 1450, which was in order for a hearing to discuss the humanitarian crisis at the intersection of Mass Ave and Melnea Cass Boulevard. I was joined at this hearing by my colleagues, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Baker, Flaherty, Flynn, Mejia. Louie Jen came at the beginning, and Counselor Durkin read a statement that she would not be participating, and we did get a letter of absence from Counselor Worrell. The Committee heard from a community panel, which included Sue Sullivan, who's the Executive Director of the New Market Bid, longtime resident and a community advocate George Sturgis and Brian McCarter. As the Chair of Public Health, I thought it was important to have all the stakeholders at this hearing as an opportunity for city officials to address the public's concern about the ongoing tragedy at Mass and Cass, which is unprecedented in Boston's history in its severity and duration. This hearing was the Administration's chance to explain to the public what steps they have taken and are taking to alleviate the suffering that we see going on night and day there. And I was hopeful that it would illuminate for the people of Boston how their tax dollars are being spent to clean up and end this crisis in a humane and safe manner. We will, as I stated yesterday, all of us be judged on how we respond to this tragedy. So far, I'm afraid, and I think many of you would agree, that the city has fallen short in its response, and the lack of accountability, to me, is deeply troubling. I was also looking forward to hearing from the board members of the Boston Public Health Commission, who recently declined to issue a declaration of emergency at their September 13th board meeting. Myself, Counselor Baker, Counselor Flaherty, and Counselor Flynn did write two letters to them. The first one was ignored, the second one, they said they received and that they would bring it up at their September 13th board meeting. Their resistance to declaring a public health emergency, they said, is rooted in the rationalization that the scope of the problem is too large for short-term measures to matter. I reject that reasoning as flawed, shortsighted, and frankly, ridiculous. We need to do something, and we need to get started. So docket 1450 will stay in committee, and I was going to take a vote on docket 1447 today, which was the resolution calling for a state of emergency. But in light of a letter I received last night, I want to pause to get more information. Via email to emergency waivers@decam, a letter dated April 6th, 2023, Dear Commissioner Gladstone, who's the Commissioner of the Division of Capital Asset Management and Mason-- and Maintenance, sorry. I write to you respectfully to request a waiver of the bidding requirements of GLC 14944A and the advertising requirements of GLC 14944J for a proposed emergency construction project that will help maintain the supply of low-threshold crisis housing beds and services. As we all know, the intersecting crisis of unsheltered homelessness, mental health challenges, and substance use in Boston, and in the area around Mass and Cass, in particular, are an ongoing emergency that continue to require extraordinary levels of intervention. Tents and temporary shelters in the Mass and Cass grew exponentially in 2021, threatening the health and safety of those living in and around them. The encampments had blocked sidewalks and streets, lacked clean water and adequate hygiene facilities, and had been the site of numerous sexual assaults and other incidents of violence. The situation also created road and control issues and infectious disease outbreaks and prevented individuals from accessing needed services in the area. These conditions greatly increased the risk of overdose and emergency department visits for those living in the encampment experiencing co-occurring substance use disorder in unsheltered homelessness. In October 21, 2021, the mayoral executive order was issued by then-Kim, Mayor Kim Janey in response to these health and safety conditions, directing the City of Boston agencies to take all necessary steps to address the conditions in the area. The order remains in effect. In the intervening time, the City, Boston Public Health Commission, and the Commonwealth's Executive Office of Health and Human Service Area Service Providers responded to this emergency situation through several interventions, the most significant of which has been the creation of six low-threshold sites to provide temporary shelter and provide health and substance use disorder services to individuals living in or at risk of living in unsheltered homeless encampments. Currently, approximately 180 individuals are receiving shelter and services at these sites, and over the course of the intervention, 480 individuals have been served by these sites since January 2022. One of these sites is the Best Western Hotel located at 891 Massachusetts Avenue, also known as the Roundtree Hotel. This site has provided low-threshold beds for up to 60 individuals at a time over the last year. With funding provided by the City of Boston Medical Center, they've been operating the site via a lease with the owner, which is now set to expire on September 30th, 2023. The City and the Boston Public Health Commission are working urgently to secure immediate replacement beds and services and maintain available housing resources to meet continued need. Over the past three months, there have been an extremely limited number of beds available in these sites. Typically, one to three beds are available for placements from the street outreach team. One site that we have begun to explore is the Boston Public Health Commission-owned Finland Building, a five-story structure located at 774 Albany Street. The Finland Building has been owned by the Boston Public Health Commission since its creation as an independent public agency by an act of the legislature, the Boston Public Health Act of 1995. The building has approximately 51,000 square feet of space, much of which has previously housed a range of office space use for the Boston Public Health Commission programs, outpatient substance use disorder services, and residential substance use treatment programs. While it is anticipated that some outpatient substance use disorder services, including harm reduction programming, will continue in a portion of the building, much of the site is currently underutilized and could be made available for reuse as temporary housing to fill unmet needs for transitional temporary shelter. The current proposal includes converting three floors of this building to replacement of low-threshold crisis housing and associated clinical space. Maintaining low-threshold housing is urgently necessary to protect the health and safety, support individuals on a pathway to stabilization and permanent housing, and prevent the re-emergence of the more critical emergency state that existed before the low-threshold housing intervention was established in January of 2022. Again, suitable and available sites for these kinds of services are extremely limited, and while we work with partners to decentralize services, we see the proposed reuse of this Finland Building as a necessary measure that would meaningfully assist our joint efforts to meet ongoing challenges. In short, the current circumstances create an immediate threat to the health and safety of the people. In granting the Public Health Commission the flexibility to more immediately retrofit this building to restore needed residential service would be an appropriate exercise of decam's discretion. The Boston Public Health Commission has moved with great urgency to remedy this situation, which does not constitute an artificial emergency brought about by delay or failure to prevent conditions. See Designing and Construction Public Facilities Office, where it's holding that a failure by public officials to remea foreseeable conditions until the need of public works become dire does not mean that this is not a state of emergency. And lastly, the proposed plans include the conversion of three floors of the Finland to accommodate low-threshold crisis housing, initially for 36 to 40 individuals, along with related clinical services. The reuse of this space for low-threshold housing requires modification to bathrooms, interior walls, plumbing, HVAC capacity, electrical upgrades, and new information technology infrastructure. A full building sprinkler system will also be needed to be installed, and the work represents the minimum necessary work to alleviate the current emergency situation. The timeline for this and services at the Mass Ave site would not allow for usual public construction development process. The Mass Ave site provides a critical health and safety function in providing housing to individuals who would otherwise experience immediate health risks and contribute to unsafe encampment living conditions, and attendant health and safety risks for individuals living in them as well as surrounding persons and property. As such, the construction necessary to retrofit the Finland Building requires immediate action. Public bidding timelines, sub-bidding filing requirements, and designer selection process would prevent this needed crisis housing to be put in place in time to serve the vulnerable population currently served at the Mass Ave site. The Public Health Commission will make the best reasonable possible efforts to maximize competition and gain the best price and quality for the work to be completed, included by soliciting at least three quotes for work. The project's scope and budget are still being finalized, but at present, the projected estimate would cost between $5 and $8 million, including architectural design fees. If this emergency waiver is granted, we will comply with prevailing wage bonding and decam certification requirements. According to the Boston Public Health with Supporter Mayor Wu, would like to seek an emergency waiver for the state of Massachusetts' public bidding laws to allow to expediate construction needed at this site. Thank you for your consideration for this emergency waiver, signed by Dr. Basola. And it was approved, the emergency waiver was approved on the 21st day of April 2023, and cited because of the mayoral executive order, which was issued in October 21 by Mayor Kim Janey, which is still in effect. So, thank you for bearing with me, but I thought it was important that I read the full letter into the record, because to me now, it seems obvious that one of two scenarios has played out and continues to play out, even while the Administration is denying both. First, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. The Board of Health has said it doesn't need a state of emergency at their September 13th meeting, and that the problems are too entrenched and that they've declined to declare one. But all this time, for more than two years, the state of emergency has been in place. And this letter shows that we're using the powers of the state of emergency that have been in place since October 2021. Second, and perhaps more troubling, is that the Administration has been wielding these state of emergency powers, which, I stress again, have been in place for more than two years, without disclosing those powers to the public. If this is the case, this is extremely disturbing, and the public deserves answers. And I think myself, who wrote a letter, along with three of my colleagues, to the Public Health Commission, deserve an answer on why they didn't tell us when I asked, when we asked for a state of emergency, that we were already in a state of emergency. So I'm looking for more answers between now and next week, and we'll decide then if I ask for a vote. So thank you, Counsel. So thank you, Council. President Plutin.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Murphy. We're in a brief recess. Just wanted to get some clarification from the clerk. On both of these dockets, they will remain in committee. There will be no vote today on any declaration. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of these dockets at this time? If not, I'll move on. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Erin Murphy, for your report and thoroughness of your research. On one hand, there's, I'm only rising because, not only, but I'm rising because the issue is mostly in District 7, and now have adopted Mass and Cass into District 7 post-redistricting. On one hand, I have read the strategic outlook from proposed and have been executed by the Boston Public Health Commission, and on one hand, it seems as though the Boston Public Health Commission has done a tremendous job in execution. When you actually read the strategic outlook and compare it to services, and also compare it to best practices or known harm reduction research, then you would understand that it is very comprehensive, and they've done an excellent job in that. On the other hand, I disagree with the administration, whether deciding or maybe with some sort of oversight, so I reserve judgment for now, in sending a representative to answer questions yesterday. Well, my colleagues have expressed several direct connection and personal stories that connect their families to this issue, and for that, I sympathize with my colleagues in saying that this, you know, it's more than just looking at an issue and saying, I care about it because I'm human and therefore, you know, I empathize. Some people here have experiences, some people here have direct experience with family members passing away, and so it's a very delicate issue. I worked in public health for maybe about a good 23 years. About 13 years of those was specifically with dual diagnosis patients or clients, and this issue is very near and dear to my heart, more reasons why I frequent in Mass and Cass, doing programs on a volunteer basis. Don't worry, my phone is here. I still need to go buy a case, though. And so, you know, when we file a hearing order, whether we disagree or not, we should at least have someone from the administration, a representative, to come and have a conversation. If you disagree, have a conversation prior and say, you know, can we have a talk about this, or bring in someone to answer some questions. And so that's my feedback in terms of that. I think that what's missing from looking at comparing it to Lisbon Portugal's plan to the strategic outlook from Boston Public Health Commission, there lacks some sort of like connection, and we talk often about this issue, right, of having a lot of resources but poorly coordinated, as my counsel here often says. And so what's missing, I think, it's better improved, or I would say improved coordination, because I don't want to speak out of turn here and say that people are not coordinating, but improved coordinations between state and city resources in a way that actually brings about more accountability and follow-through. With anything therapeutic, anything public health, I hear a lot of my colleagues talk about wraparound, and I think that sometimes it's, some people are ill-informed in terms of what exactly that looks like with an execution. And I would say that part of that coordination has to connect to the family at homes, and so that's missing, and part of it has to be holistic, and the services have to be holistic. Then it has to be an umbrella to coordinate all of the services, all family members, and all resources. So that coordination is tough. The problem is huge, right? So we're stuck, we're here with a problem where, I think in politics, we're often, we're saying, oh, well, you know, it's not me, it's them, it's the us and them strategy so that we can appear like we care, we're doing something about it. And I think it's just really delicate, and it hurts to come into a hearing and not be responded to. So I don't fully agree with the position of, you know, the city not taking stance on this or doing their part in terms of public health standpoint, but I do sympathize with my colleague in terms of not getting a response from the city. So I would say improve our relationship moving forward. It means that we're taking ourselves seriously, that we're showing up to hearings, that we, if we do show up, that we're communicating in advance that it's a short-term time. We all do it. I do it, so I'm taking responsibility here. And I'm saying that moving forward, that in order for the people to take us seriously, it means that we're showing up and that we're invested. We're patient with the process, we're better timed managing our own other stuff, because we do work 82 more hours a week, but that we're doing that a little bit more carefully and intentionally in terms of our hearings here, and maybe, and then obviously translating that to the communication with the administration, so that we're not being hypocrites when we say, hey, you're not showing up. Okay, we're showing up. Where are you? So hopefully that helps in terms of perspective from someone who attended the hearing yesterday to its entirety. And I look forward to more conversation, and I look forward to the hearing tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's clear why now the administration didn't want to show up yesterday. That's disheartening. This is actually something, this is the doubling down, and if you look at the ordinance, the doubling down on housing first, which I think we should be talking about treatment first, and then housing after treatment. I think it's, I think it's a path that we go down where we're putting people into housing, and there's no sort of end date on it, like, okay, you need to be sober, we've got to, you can't live like this, or you're going to die one way or the other. I'm disappointed that this administration chose to apply this to the South End without even giving them the common respect of having a sit-down and saying, hey, this is what we're going, this is what we're doing. We're actually in an emergency situation. So that means, I think, the conversation about the ordinance is moot. We're in, we're in that emergency situation right now. We can go in what we need to do with those tents now, currently. Just wanted to make a couple of those points, disappointed for the South End, that this is what's, you know, we've talked about for years, how do we decentralize? How do we share maybe the pain? And this is a doubling down of not just more programming going into the South End, but high-impact programming going into the South End. So, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel, for your steadfast belief in this and in holding people accountable. We've heard a lot about transparency and accountability, you know, so thank you for holding people accountable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Does anyone else want to speak before I offer brief comments? I want to say thank you to Counsel Murphy for the important work she has done on this issue. I also want to acknowledge the points Counsel Fernandez Anderson made, and maybe it won't go over well, but we are critical of the administration for not being here at the meeting, rightfully so, but our colleagues are not here either. And I say that because we can't have it both ways. We can't be upset that the mayor's team is not here, and then city council colleagues not be present either. So just want to acknowledge the important comments Counsel Fernandez Anderson made, and I agree with them. Mr. Clerk, both of these dockets will remain in committee. We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 1525.
Docket number 1525. Counsel Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the impact of a government shutdown on Boston's veterans and military members and military families.
The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. This is a hearing to discuss the upcoming government shutdown and the impact it will have on veterans here in the greater Boston area as well as across the country. It's likely that the government is going to shut down on September 30, a couple days from now. We're looking to have a hearing about this government shutdown and the impact it would have on veterans and military families. We have had government shutdowns before, and it hasn't impacted veterans and military families to the extent that it has other residents and citizens across the country. The retired veterans and disabled veterans will continue to receive their financial support, and that program will continue. The VA programming will continue, but there's many federal departments that also provide critical services to veterans and military families, such as the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with various housing programs for veterans, as well as the U.S. Department of Labor. They have a program called VETS. It's Veterans Employment and Training Services. That is likely to be impacted as well. So this hearing will discuss what will take place, how we can work together, what steps we might need to take to help veterans. I would include the Commissioner of Veterans Services in this discussion, and I'm also planning to have a Veterans Town Hall sometime on Friday to discuss this as well. Want to invite my colleagues if they would like to be, if they would like to come. But the government shutdown is going to hurt a lot of residents across Boston, across the country, not just veterans, but people in need, families in need, low-income residents, families with children, with little children that rely on various food assistance programs will be impacted. So shutting down a government has a devastating impact on people in need, and that's the role of government, is supporting people in need. And at this time, we're not providing the critical compassionate support we need to as a federal government to residents in need. So want to let my colleagues know if you'd like to work with me on the issue impacting veterans. I'd love to have you, but also, we could also discuss the impact it will have as well on other federal programs as well. Thank you, Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Counsel Baker? Counsel Braden? Counsel Coletta? Counsel Durkin? Counsel Fernandez Anderson? Counsel Flaherty? Counsel Lara? Counsel Louis Jean? Counsel Murphy? Counsel Mejia? And Counsel Worrell? This docket will be assigned to the Committee on Veterans, Military Families, and Military Affairs.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. We're on to Docket 1526, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 1526. Counsel Lara offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of a municipal bank for the City of Boston.
The chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. The United States and the City of Boston specifically has had a long history of discriminatory lending practices towards marginalized communities specifically. Here on this council floor, we've had numerous conversations about lack of access to loans for small business owners and the difficulty and the expense of building affordable housing in the middle of an affordable housing crisis. These types of discriminatory lending practices from private banks for homeownership, small businesses, directly correlate to the issues of generational wealth and the racial wealth gap that we see here in the City of Boston and across the country. A Boston Federal Reserve Bank study of 1992 found that an applicant's race was significant in determining the approval of their mortgage application, and specifically that Black and Latino borrowers with the same profile as a white applicant were 60% more likely to be denied. Boston indicators on the Boston Foundation provided data to us in 2021 showing that 20% of white-owned firms did not receive any debt financing that they applied for, and this number doubled to 38% for our Black-owned firms here in the city. The inherent profit-seeking nature of private banking has resulted in poor risk management, as we've seen with the failure of the Silicon Valley Bank. Since the SVB Bank failure, our office has been meeting with the Massachusetts Public Banking Coalition. We've become members of the Public Banking Institute, where we've really learned collectively about what public banking can look like, not just here in the City of Boston, but what it's looked like historically across the country. And in contrast, the inherent goal of a public bank is to serve the public interest with a banking model that uses public lending as a tool for community development and governance, and a structure that is led by public servants specifically, whose sole purpose is to work for and with the residents of the City of Boston. This is a vision that's chaired by local and statewide coalitions like the Massachusetts Public Banking Coalition, elected officials across the country and at all levels of government. A former state representative, Mel King, filed the public banking bill at the State House that was then refiled by State Representative Nica Lugardo and State Representative Mike Connolly as well. And Representative AOC and Rashida have also worked on a public banking bill at the congressional level, at the federal level here. With public banking, the interests and the profits flow to the communities that owns the bank. And a municipal bank in the City of Boston, owned and operated by public actors, would help us begin to address the wounds caused by historical discriminatory lending and would really operate in the public interest in making loans that benefit our communities. Increasing access to equitable loans for small businesses, meeting credit needs for our local community, and providing cheaper financing than private lenders for us as a municipality would help us fill in some of these credit gaps. Every public dollar should be used for the public good, and municipal banking, I believe, can help us get one step closer. Municipal banking is a policy that has been endorsed by the Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition, which our mayor and our administration is a member in, and I believe that a lot of the leadership, not just here in the administration but all across the city, has been really invested in figuring out how to make this happen. There are already structures within city government that can help us create a municipal bank, and I look forward to having a conversation. I think that ultimately, the structure and the governance can be really complex. What that looks like is up for us to decide, but the benefits of a municipal bank to the City of Boston, but particularly to our most vulnerable communities, is really immeasurable right now in this moment. So I look forward to continuing to have this conversation and to hold a hearing pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to sign on? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Louis Jean, Counsel Worrell, Counsel Mejia. Please add the chair.
Please add the chair. This docket, 1526, will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 1527, please?
Docket number 1527, Council Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the unique needs of our veteran population in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Last weekend, I attended a Veteran Roundtable that Council President Flynn hosted, and at that, there were different veteran services and a representative from the City of Boston Veteran Department talking about the needs that our veterans have here in the city, which made me think, as the Chair of Veterans Affairs, that it would be important to hold a hearing to discuss the unique needs that our veteran population have here in Boston. We offer special benefits for our service members, veterans and their families. That includes things from bonus programs, veteran annuities, employment hiring support, our New England Center and Home for Veterans, our GI Bill. We have two wonderful healthcare systems, the VA in Jamaica Plain and West Roxbury. We also offer veteran legal services, just to name a few. But there's also many of our veterans in need of basic services like housing, food, and medical support, and they're not always connected to these services. And most of us know that our veterans suffer homelessness and mental health issues at a much higher rate than others in our population. There's also the unique needs of our women veterans, which I've heard from many. They do have good support networks and host events where oftentimes they do speak of their needs are different from those of other veterans. So I think it's important that we do everything we can to support and offer outreach to our veterans and work alongside the Office of Veteran Services, which does a wonderful job. But in this hearing, it would bring together other agencies like Age Strong. Many of our veterans are seniors now, so we need to make sure that Age Strong has the capacity to support our veterans. Boston Public Health Commission, the Disability Commission, and the Housing Department, just to name a few. So I'm looking forward to this hearing and hearing from people who are working directly with our veterans, making sure that we're doing everything possible to support them. So thank you, Council President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Durkin, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louis Jean, Council Mahia, Council Worrell. Council Baker, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, I'd like to just reconsider.
1526, I'd like to sign on to that, the previous docket. Okay, we'll get to that one in a second. And please add the chair as well. Thank you, Council Murphy, for calling for this important discussion and mentioning the fastest-growing group of veterans are women veterans, and they need to be, we need to ensure that they are treated with respect and dignity, and especially that they have the critical medical care that they've earned at the VA Medical Center. And I also want to acknowledge our LGBTQ veterans for their service, but also for some unique needs that they have as well. Thank you, Council Murphy. Docket 1527 will be referred to the Committee on Veterans, Military Families, and Military Affairs. At this time, the chair recognizes Council Baker to reconsider docket 1526. Council Baker, what do you wish to do?
I just want to sign on.
Mr. Clark, can you please add Council Baker's name, please? Thank you, Council Baker. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're on to docket 1528 and docket 1529. Mr. Clark, can you read both of those together, please?
Docket number 1528, Council Murphy offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding follow-up summer school incidents. And docket number 1529, Council Murphy offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding the English High bus ramp.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Council Murphy, do you want to speak on both of these dockets together, or do you want to speak?
I can speak together, that's fine.
Okay. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I do just want to start, and I definitely said this before when I filed a 17F. I never thought that I would file so many. I work really hard, but I do feel that oftentimes my job is made harder when people, department heads in different departments, when I reach out to advocate and support residents, that my job is to do, that I'm often met with unanswered phone calls or answers, emails not replied to. So I am filing these two 17Fs to get more information. The first one is a follow-up to the 17F that I filed back on August 30th, when I requested information on the data collected related to violations of the Code of Conduct that the school staff, administrators, bus drivers, bus monitors, school safety officers, and the Boston Police filed during the 2023 summer programs. That information did come 11 days late. They asked if I would be willing to wait. I said I wasn't, but they still made me wait. I did receive that response on September 18th, but it did not have the details I was asking for. We got a copy of it at last council meeting, and it had an answer, I'll continue reading, but there were some questions I had on that. The following response was what BPS gave to the 17F request, stating that in summer 2023, there were 17 total BPS Code of Conduct violations. But consistent with BPS student data policy, we cannot report the specific number or description of the incidents if they involve numbers of students that are less than 10. So there was a list of less than 10, listing the different categories: disorderly incidents, weapon, disruption, fight, leaving school, verbal threat, instigate, fight. So I'm requesting that through the mayor, filed today, that I have two more follow-up questions. You reported that in the summer of 2023, there were 17 total BPS Code of Conduct violations. The chart you attached shows the incidents fall into seven possible categories of misconduct. I am requesting the internal reports, SSR, written by the Safety Service Offices for each of these 17 incidents that occurred during the summer of 2023. Please explain. Number two, the Boston Public School policy that states, consistent with data policy, we cannot report the specific number of incidents if it involves a number less than 10. So I'm asking for those two answers on that 17F. The second one is something I have stood here and talked about before. It's now close to going on a year, 11 and a half months later, and I'm still advocating. I'll continue until it is complete. It's very unfortunate that I have to stand again and ask now a 17F. On October 12, 2022, I attended Civic Engagement Day hosted by the Commission for Persons with Disability and listened to over 100 Boston Public Schools' special education students who came into this council chamber. They filled the seats in here, and they came to ask questions of their elected officials. Mayor Wu, myself, and Council President Flynn were here, and there was a student who went right over there to that microphone where our 14th Councilor Mike sits, and he spoke up with the support of his assistive device. He cannot speak without the iPad attached, so I vividly remember going over, making sure he knew that his voice would be heard, and I adjusted the microphone for him, and he told us, I'm sorry, that he wanted our help. I'm sorry. Just a second. That he wanted our help moving the wheelchair bus drop-off location, that is at the trash and delivery door of his school. He informed us that the dumpster is in the way, and it's hard for the teachers, I'm sorry, it's just hard to just imagine, this is still an issue, that it's hard for the teachers to navigate around the barrels and the pulls and push him and other students that are in wheelchairs. I spoke to teachers that day. They came up and told me that it was the custodian several years ago who put down a slab of cement because the teachers, it's usually not the classroom teacher. I know as a special education teacher that it's the bus monitors in the parades who almost always go out to collect the students when the buses arrive. Many of them are older, they're not strong in lifting. High school-age students in wheelchairs is very physically hard for anyone, never mind the women, mostly women, who work with our special education students. And they said that the custodian was watching them for years struggle and had put a slab of cement down so you could kind of bump the wheelchair up and over. So I began conversations with various city departments immediately following that meeting, and I don't know if you remember, Council President Flynn, but standing there in front of you and Mayor Wu, I did look the young man in the eye, and I said, I will make sure that we get this fixed. The Commission of Persons with Disabilities Superintendent Skipper and her team, BPS facilities in the Boston Transportation Department, were all informed of the concern I brought forward, and I was told they were working on a solution. I asked to be part of those conversations, but was told by Intergovernmental on several occasions I would not be allowed to attend. In February, I reached out once again to get an update on the progress. I was informed that the Disability Commission proposed a sketch for accessibility improvements to the McBride Street entrance, and they would be building a compliant ramp. As anyone who knows, like I do with masks and casts, I drive by situations that are troubling to me. I've driven up McBride Street more times in the last year than I ever have, the 53 years I've lived here in the City of Boston, to check on the progress. And after several attempts to check on the progress of the work, I requested a visit to English High, which was met with reluctance, several text messages, emails, phone calls, questions like, why do you need to, what's your intent? And on May 23rd, I finally visited the school and was promised that the work would be completed during the summer. I walked around with the principal, we have the same name, Principal Murphy, and she was excited to hear that the work would be completed during this past summer, and the students would have a new equitable and compliant entrance for their wheelchairs for the new school year in this September. On August 23rd, 2023, I sent an email to the superintendent and her team and IGR, letting them know that I drove by the school on August 20th, hoping to see the new ramp, but saw that nothing was done. I did not get any response from anyone I sent the email to. I attached the email below for reference, so I did attach the email that I sent on August 23rd at 2:31 PM. The email stated, hello, everyone, as you all know, I've been advocating for the entrance in wheelchair ramp at English High School since last October. I visited the school last week with Megan and Principal Murphy, and we were told that all the meetings with different departments were complete and the work would be done this summer in time for the new school year. This seemed very reasonable, seeing though, though, it's not that big of a job. I drove by the other day and was upset to see that no work has been done. Please let me know what happened, and if we can still expect the needed changes to be complete in time for the first day of school. I texted BPS last Wednesday, a week ago, and was told that they checked with Claire Kelly a few weeks ago on the status, and she would be following up with me. I've never received a text back, a call, or a conversation from Claire or anyone on the issue. I'm requesting all emails, phone calls, and text message correspondence between all city departments and employees relating to this matter. I'm requesting all dates and minutes for meetings that did happen between all city departments and employees relating to this matter, and I'm requesting any drawings or plans that were created for the bus stop at McBride Street. I know that at one point, they were saying, anyone who knows English High, I know it's in your district, Council Lara, there is a reasonably new, not a brand-new, but condo, and at one point, they were saying they were going to ask for past due community benefits from the planning department, which I said, I think that's completely ridiculous, trying to lean in on a past development construction, expecting them to pay for something that we, in our school budget, which we know because we passed the school budget and we have a facilities budget which is different, have more than enough money to accommodate this, what to me is a very simple fix, but a very big deal to me, and I would assume to many other people. And this isn't about me, but yesterday, we got several calls from teachers at the school, and they were just in tears. They read it in a newspaper, wrote an article about it because they saw it on the agenda Monday, and they said they were showing their students that I didn't forget and that we're still advocating and we're really trying to get this done for them. So I just stand, hoping that this information will help get it moved forward. I think it's ridiculous that I have to stand up here and file this in the first place, but it's what I'll continue to do. Thank you.
We're going to take a vote on this docket, which is, on the first one, which is 1528, the 17F follow-up summer school incidents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. On the next docket, which is 1529, Council Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and pass it to this docket. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. We're on to docket 1530. Mr. Clark?
Docket number 1530, Council Louis Jean offered the following: Resolution recognizing October 1st, 2023 as Nigerian Independence Day.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The chair recognizes Council Louis Jean. Council Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you. On October 1st, 63 years ago, Nigeria embarked on a journey towards self-determination, freedom, and sovereignty, breaking the chains of colonial rule and forging its own destiny away from the British Empire. A lot of African nations, their independence is still in its infancy when we consider how recently they gained their independence from colonial rule. It was marked by resilience, determination, and unity, values that continue to define the Nigerian spirit to this day. Our rise to honor the vibrant cultures of the Yoruba, Ibo, Hausa, Fulani, and all the other rich and vibrant Nigerian tribes and cultures. Nigeria is a nation that encapsulates diversity and richness. Its contributions to the field of art, literature, music, and sports have earned it a well-deserved place on the global stage. Many people in the African diaspora, a lot of Haitians, can trace our roots back to West Africa and to Nigeria, specifically Nigeria, the Yoruba people, and Benin. On October 1st, let's come together regardless of our ethnic, religious, or regional differences and extend our heartfelt celebration and recognition to all the Nigerian and Nigerian-Americans across Boston and beyond. Nigeria is the largest African nation, of which we have immigrants here in the United States, and is the top, Nigerians are one of the top 10 African immigrants in Massachusetts, have contributed a lot to our Commonwealth and to our city. Large Nigerian populations exist in Hyde Park, Rosendale, Dorchester, Roxbury, and in the greater Boston area. To our Nigerian and Nigerian-American community, may your journey towards greater prosperity, unity, and peace be filled with hope and determination. We'll be raising the Nigerian flag on October 3rd, 2023, at noon at City Hall Plaza, so please join us. I want to shout out to Joseph Okafor and the former Rosendale ONS liaison for bringing this to my attention so that we could celebrate the Nigerian community. Growing up, my sisters and I would go to events hosted by Nigerian Youth Organization of Boston all the time because they were a lot of fun and they were really open to everyone in the city. And so I want to shout out to NYO and to all the groups this year had the pleasure of participating in Ibo Day, and I'm just really grateful for the contribution of the Nigerian community. So please join us again next Tuesday, October 3rd, at noon for a flag raising here with the Nigerian community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louis Jean. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the lead filer for filing this. As the only African and the first African-born city councilor here in the City of Boston and making history, the first African elected official. of Boston, uh, and making history, the first African elected official in the city of Boston, um, I proudly stand and of course, celebrating, uh, my fellow West African brothers and sisters' um, Independence Day. I did do my, uh, uh, what is it called, the DNA lineage, and I came up 3% Nigerian, so I'm going to claim that all the way. Um, and shout out to all of my, um, dear friends, Dr. Fatay, Faluke, Awame, all the my friends that I went to, um, John D. O'Brien with, um, in school. And, uh, today, in heart and spirit, um, I wish you a happy Independence Day. It means a lot because just 15 years prior to Cape Verde Islands receiving, or the Cape Verdeans at home are going to kill me, Cabo Verdeanus, um, receiving their independence, um, and then Nigeria, just 16, just 15 years before that, in 1960, um, it would significantly place them as a, as a very new country. And to have made tremendous, um, progress under so much oppression after, you know, centuries of colonialism and oppression, um, so I, I am just thrilled at this resolution. Wish, um, I was on it, um, but I will celebrate with, um, my sister in service, Council Louie Jen. And again, um, as a proud African, I wish all of my Nigerian sisters and brothers, um, happy Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone?
No, no, it's okay.
The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jen. Council Louie Jen, you have the floor.
Uh, I'd love to add Council Fernandez Anderson as an original co-sponsor. And something also I wanted to mention too, in order to celebrate, um, Suya Joint is a restaurant in, I believe, your district. If folks wanted to celebrate Nigerian Independence Day, you could wear green because their flag is green, white, green, but you can also support a local business in Roxbury with Suya Joint. And I'd like to add, uh, Tanya, Council Fernandez Anderson is an original co-sponsor she'd like.
Mr. Clerk, please add Council Fernandez Anderson as an original co-sponsor, please.
Thank you, Council Louie Jen.
You're welcome.
Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Flaherty, Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coetta, Council Durkin, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Alara, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Rell, please add the Chair. Council Louie Jen and Council Fernandez Anderson seeks, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket, 1530. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're onto docket 1531, please.
Document number 1531, Council Alara offered the following, resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Alara. Council Alara, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. I want to start off by acknowledging the land that we're standing on today is the original homelands of the Mashpee Wampanoag, the Akina Wampanoag, the Nimuk, and the Massachusetts Tribal Nations. I want to acknowledge the painful history of genocide and the forced removal from this territory, and I want to affirm my honor and respect for the many diverse indigenous peoples who are still connected to the lands that we gather in today. Thanks to the executive order filed by Mayor Kim Janey, the city of Boston celebrates Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. Since time immemorial, American Indians, Alaska natives, natives Hawaii, and native Hawaiians have built a vibrant diverse culture, safeguarding land language, spirit, knowledge, and traditions across generations. On Indigenous Peoples' Day, our city celebrates Indigenous Peoples' invaluable contributions and resilience and recognizes their inherent sovereignty. Flags from nation-states around the world have been flown at Boston City Hall to honor that nation and its people, but only last year, for the first time, did we as a city raise the flag of any indigenous nation. And I am refiling this resolution in hopes that it is not the last. Um, I am hopeful that my colleagues will join my office, tribe members, and community members on Friday, October 6th, in 2023 at noon, for a flag raising and celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Alara. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Council President Flynn. Um, my council colleague, um, Laura, um, she got jokes. Um, she asked if I'm indigenous too. No, but I wish, just a little bit. Um, I am rising, um, of course, in solidarity with, uh, indigenous people. Um, it's, it's weird that we have to like, call them a separate thing, like this land belongs to the indigenous people, this land does not belong to Europeans, Africans, or Spaniards, or anybody else outside of indigenous people. It still doesn't belong to anybody from Europe, or your ancestors, or those children of ancestors who are here, third, fourth, fifth generation now. Um, but, fine, you claimed it, you stole it, you took it, now your descendants are here and we're grateful for it. But we should be very honest about what that means. I fostered, um, a few children from El Salvador and Honduras, and they would cross over, you know, they would, you know, pay coyotes and they would cross over, and they really do have this concept, um, to its truest form, that the land belongs to them, and they don't feel like they're doing anything illegal when they're crossing over. That America was, at one point, just land and they would just cross over, um, as migrants. So here, um, this reminds me a lot about the, the recent, um, uh, just contentious issue, or I guess it's become a contentious issue, where people are starting to say, and even people on the streets and some constituents are talking about how we are allowing Haitian migrants and all of these people that are going to become criminals and stuff like that to cross over, and yet, the law, the land never belonged to any of us to begin with. And so paying homage to the indigenous people and standing here as an ally, I would say thank you for your land, thank you for, um, everything that, um, you contribute, continue to contribute to our society today, um, and forgive us for, um, so much harm, and let us, um, pay homage to the, the Jews who, or the Jewish, uh, community who, uh, say never forget, uh, their genocide, but the largest genocides, um, in the world happen to be, uh, to history today, the indigenous people, from Aborigines Australia to the Americas, hundreds of millions of people. So let's, let us not forget what this means, let us not, um, just pretend and brush over this topic. Yes, I like to, um, smile and celebrate with love and happiness with my council colleague, but also, it's very important for us to not forget what's happened to them and be very honest about how we got here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone like to sign on to this? Please raise, raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Braden, Council Coetta, Council Durkin, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Louie Jen, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Rell, please add the Chair. Council Alara seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket, 1531. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. We're onto personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1532.
Document number 1532, Council Flynn for Council Braden.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket, 1532. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1533.
Document number 1533, Council Flynn offered the following.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this docket, 1533. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. We're onto late files. I've been informed that there are two late files, uh, one is a personnel order and one is a hearing order. Okay, and we actually have three late files, including an absence letter. Mr. Clerk, why don't we do the first personnel order?
Personnel order, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. These three late file matters include a personnel order, a hearing order, and an absence letter. These late file matters should be on everyone's desk at this time. We're going to take a vote to ensure that these late file matters are added to the I can wait a few seconds to make sure everyone has them. All in favor of adding these three late file matters into the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, these three late file matters have been, have been added. Mr. Clerk, would you read the first late file matter, please?
First late file matter, personnel order, Council Flynn for, Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this late file matter has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the absence letter?
Dear Council President Flynn, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, September 27th, 2023. My staff will be attending the meeting and will thoroughly review the video in meeting minutes. Sincerely, Councilor Ricardo Arroyo.
This late file matter will be placed on file. Mr. Mr. Clerk, the third late file matter is a hearing order.
Order filed by Councilors, uh, Mahia and Fernandez Anderson, order for a hearing to evaluate the community engagement efforts of the various neighborhood planning initiatives across the city of Boston. Whereas the Boston Planning and Development Agency is planning and, and economic development agency for the city of Boston, thus plays a far-reaching role in shaping the city. And be it ordered, the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing regarding the community efforts of the various neighborhood planning initiatives. Representatives from the Boston Planning Development Agency, Planning Department, advocates, individuals with lived experiences, and members of the public are encouraged to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, our office is currently working right now with the Boston, um, with BPDA, as it's affectionately known nowadays, to ensure that Spanish-speaking residents of East Boston understand Plan East Boston. We are incredibly grateful to them for helping us organize and ensure that the information is being shared with those living in the community where changes are being made. We also want to thank Council Coetta's office for joining us and bringing in constituents from her district. While I understand that the various neighborhood planning initiatives have been in process for years now, and most are at the end of their trajectory or already complete, I strongly believe that it is important that we evaluate the process to understand how we got here and what we can learn from this so that we're moving, um, in a more responsive way with our residents moving forward. With any neighborhood project, community input is the most valuable and taken the most into consideration at the very beginning. So this is an invitation to reflect and ensure that we are doing right by our residents moving forward. As a Boston City Councilor, it is incredibly important that we ensure that we are being responsive to the needs of our residents and ensure that there is accountability and transparency into all things that will affect them. East Boston is a majority Latino neighborhood. For this reason, it is crucial that, at the very least, we understand what changes, they understand what changes to anticipate. Ultimately, community engagement needs to be reflective of the neighborhood composition for transparency and accountability purposes. Our office now has been receiving a lot of emails regarding Plan Charlestown. I can't emphasize enough how important it is that things cannot be done with our residents without them. For this reason, I think it's important to evaluate the community engagement efforts and, uh, the various neighborhood planning initiatives throughout the city of Boston. I look forward to learning alongside the administration how we can ensure, how we are effectively and meaningfully engaging our residents through the city of Boston. So, you know, I, I think it's really important, um, to note that since the moment I stepped into this chamber, every single time I'm at a civic engagement meeting, or whether I'm in Charlestown, Alston and Brighton, Dorchester, Roxbury, Matapan, no matter what your socioeconomic status is, what your race is, what your gender is, what your political influence is, at the end of the day, everyone across the city feels left out of conversations that are supposed to include their voices. And so for me, this is an opportunity for us to really think about how we're doing business, and if we're really serious about pausing and really leading with community, that we have an opportunity to reevaluate how we have been building here in the city of Boston, what role community plays, how we're listening to the things that people are saying, because I find it hard to believe that we get thousands of emails from people and yet, plans still move forward, right? So I think there is definitely a flaw in the process, and if we're serious about listening to those that we serve, this is an opportunity for us to look at how well are we listening to the people, and what are we doing when we hear what they want? Are we implementing that? So with that said, I'm looking forward to having the administration's full participation in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Council Mahia, for adding me as a co-sponsor. Um, thank you for filing, um, thank you, Mr. President. I, um, ag- agree to, um, be a co-sponsor because I'm, I do see a lot of these issues perpetuating itself, or whether the city is doing it, or the community is misinformed, or there's a disconnect, or a lack of coordination. Um, I think that's, uh, why, 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 uh, this filing is important, because then it offers the opportunity for us to actually get to one platform and be able to workshop some ideas, figure out where the kinks are, and improve the process, hopefully. There's a huge opportunity here in Roxbury, particularly, um, I would say D7, but it's specific to Roxbury and Grove Hall. There are a lot of developments coming, um, Madison Park, we're talking whether it's schools, a lot of park improvements, uh, D7 being the most disenfranchised, historically, uh, the most disenfranchised, um, with exceptions, I think, to now, um, Council Rell's district being the most disenfranchised. But, uh, historically, Roxbury the most disenfranchised, um, uh, town in Boston. I'm very excited and grateful for, um, the mayor's, uh, investment, or capital investments in all these improvements. Um, and I think, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention, um, for, uh, former Mayor Kim Janey as well, and the investments that she left behind and now, uh, propelling into current time. But also, just what I'm seeing is that meetings are, uh, overlapping. So for example, a Madison Park, a Shattuck Hospital, or, um, a development, um, meeting somewhere will all be at the same time, same day, or somehow overlapping. And so we talk a lot about transparency and accountability and inclusivity in the city, um, and these records should follow with example, and it's not happening. So I'll have to call BPDA, or I'll call MOH, and I'll say, hey, can you please move these around? It takes a lot to move these pieces around last minute. Um, I have to say that they are cooperative, um, they do move them around, but the community has also, and I saw something that you have filed, Council President Flynn, the community has also been asking for in-person meetings. They're saying, look, um, these are ineffective, you are talking to a camera, no one's listening, and you're sending thou- hundreds of letters. I'm getting, I've, I've gotten so far at least over 400 letters in opposition to the Shattuck proposal. I get hundreds of letters, and I'm not going to, you know, um, take up all the time here talking about all developments, but this, uh, sentiment that Councilor Mahia has expressed with, just feeling, um, heard or dismissed, um, as though the process is pretentious and it's not real. And I think that, um, again, reserving judgment here and saying, look, let's look at the pieces, and I think that a lot of the times, even if I disagree with administration in terms of policy, I do believe that there are a lot of good things being done in District 7, and I do love and like a lot of what Mayor Wu was doing. But then, in terms of process, I think it's worth working with their, our cabinet or departments and saying, look, some of these things are not working out for the city, how do we, might ourselves as a city district counselor, at large counselors, get together to represent, properly represent our district to be able to have those conversations in a practical way and make sense out of the process? So, thank you again to Council Mahia for filing this, and I look forward to the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name to this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coetta, Council Durkin, Council Alara, Council Louie Jen, Council Murphy, Council Rell, please add the Chair. This late file matter, although initially going to go to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, listening closely to Council Mahia, I have made the decision to place it into government accountability, transparency, and accessibility. Mr. Clerk, we're onto green sheets. Anyone wishing to pull the green sheet may do so at this time. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would like to pull two matters today. Alex, would you like me to give you both dockets now?
Yes.
Docket 1378 on page 14 of the green sheets, and also the second docket is 1198 on page 15 of the green sheets.
Mr. Clerk, we'll start with 1378. Mr. Clerk, we'll start with 1378. We can read that into the record.
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 1378. Message in order for your approval, in order to declare surplus, the city-owned parcel currently under the management of the Boston Public Library, and to transfer care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. The land is located at 151 Cambridge Street in the West End District, Ward 3, parcel And docket number 1198 from the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,312,297,000 in the form of a grant for the Community Benefits Agreement awarded by the Boston Planning and Development Agency, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund transportation improvements.
Mr. Clerk, before we continue, can we pull the committee on docket 1378, and docket 1198?
The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Worrell.
Yes.
Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Lara.
Yes.
And Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Okay, that docket is, docket 1378 is properly before the committee. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This first docket, 1378, is pretty self-explanatory. It's to transfer a land from the library, and it's in Councilor Durkan's District, District 8, so we can build a mixed-use library. And this is kind of close to my heart, 10 years ago, at the beginning of my second term, I filed, I filed an order for a hearing to stop the discussion on mixed-use libraries. There was none really around. It's kind of more of a thing now than it was 10 years ago, and this will be one of our first ones. I think Chinatown has one also, but not sure. This was, and my original hearing order was, because I had looked at the need in Fields Corner for the Fields Corner Library, put senior housing above it. How nice would it be to be a senior, and your front lobby would have kids in it, and reading and learning going on? So that's, that's the first one, 1378. And the second docket is 1198. It's 16 grants.
Oh, we're going to go back to the 1198.
We'll vote on that first.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you're down on docket 1378, Council Baker?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on docket 1378? And I understand, Mr. Clerk, this vote needs to be a roll call, but also a two-thirds vote?
Yes.
Can you call the roll, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 1378, Councilor Arroyo. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Braden.
Aye.
Council Braden, aye. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkan.
Yes.
Council Durkan, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1378 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is passed. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call vote on docket 1198 to ensure it's properly before the body?
Mr. President, before we move on.
Okay, yeah.
I should have asked the district counselor if she wanted to weigh in just on anything in particular, if that's okay. I'm sorry, I should have said that from the beginning, then we could take the vote after.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Council Durkan, do you want to weigh in on docket 1378?
Yes.
The chair recognizes, Council Durkan.
I just want to thank everyone for your support. The West End Library is incredibly important to my district, and I'm very excited to see all the leadership on Councilor Baker's part in the Development Committee. But also, wanted to share that this really came about from community residents asking for housing in the district, so just wanted to thank everyone. This is a very exciting move, and there's a public process going on right now in the district. And just wanted to thank some of the residents publicly for supporting this, and really for this being a community effort. So, thank you, Council Baker, thank you, Council President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Durkan, thank you, Council Baker. Council Baker, do you want to continue on 1198?
Yes. 1198, similar to what we passed earlier today, is a series of 16 grants that were, like, there's two grants in here that I was part of in different development in my district. They're everywhere from, anywhere from $10,000 up to $880,000. These are specific monies going towards specific projects that wrap around the areas that where the project discussion was happening. The grants amounted to $2,312,297. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote on docket 1198, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 1198, Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkan.
Yes.
Council Durkan, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1198 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
That is passed. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay. The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Hello, Mr. President. Can you add me to the previous docket for the West End Library? Please add me. Is it a yes?
Mr. Clerk, can you please add Council Mejia on the West End Library vote as a yes?
Yes.
The, we're still on green sheets. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would like to pull two dockets from the green sheets. Docket number 1374, it's on page 11 at the very bottom, and docket number 1375 on page 12 at the very top.
Thank you, Council Lara. Mr. Clerk, can you read down both dockets into the record?
From the Committee on Housing and Community Development, docket number 1374. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston's with the mayor's office of housing to apply for, accept, and expend the federal fiscal year 23 continuum of care grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, in the amount not to exceed $50 million. The funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing to persons experiencing homelessness. And docket number 1375. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $25 million in the form of a grant from the Commonwealth Builder Program awarded by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, to be administered by the mayor's office of housing. The grant will fund the creation of workforce homeownership units and long-term availability of those units to eligible moderate-income households.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now we're going to pull the committee to ensure they're properly before the body. This is docket 1374, Mr. Clerk.
Do both dockets.
Do you want to do both at the same time? Mr. Clerk, we'll do 1374 and 1375 at the same time?
From the Committee on Housing and Community Development, Council Lara.
Yes.
Yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Council Durkan.
Yes.
And Council Coletta.
Yes.
Both dockets are properly before the body. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Both of these dockets are renewal grants that we've already held hearings on late last year, and tomorrow is actually the deadline for the city to receive the funding, and so I'm calling for a vote on both of these dockets today. For docket number 1374, this grant is for $25 million. It's for the Continuum of Care Grant. That is a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development program that's designed to provide housing and supportive services for homeless individuals and families. As the designated collaborative applicant on behalf of Boston's Continuum of Care, the city of Boston receives the funding for eligible programs, which are the Leasing and Rental Assistance for Permanent Housing Supportive Services Only Program, Homeless Management Information System, and the Continuum of Care Planning. So these renewable funds are going to be used to fund 40 grants that are going to be serving over 2,000 households, including 1,300 chronically homeless individuals at any given time. And our application includes the renewal of 300 permanent housing slots for families, and the renewal funds also include permanent housing programs for survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking. For docket number 1375, the grant is for $50 million. This is the Commonwealth Builder, which is a mass housing homeownership production program. Under CWB, the mass housing makes grants and/or forgivable construction loans to eligible projects that provide deed-restricted affordable homeownership units. The mayor's office of housing has committed $18.2 million of the $25 million to six projects in the city already, and that will create 167 new income-restricted homeownership units. And I can share a table with my colleagues if you would like to see where those are located. The mayor's office of housing expects to award $14.7 million to two additional projects that are currently in the pipeline, adding an under 63 units total. So, in total, both of these grants combined are about $75 million. They're vital for housing projects that are going to be serving the city, both for transitional housing, housing for people who are suffering from homelessness, but also for homeownership opportunities. And I'm asking that my colleagues take a vote to pass both of them today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. Mr. Clerk, let's do a roll call vote on docket 1374 first.
Roll call vote on docket number 1374, Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkan.
Yes.
Council Durkan, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1374 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This docket has passed. Can we do a roll call vote on 1375, please?
Roll call vote on docket 1375, Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Braden.
Aye.
Council Braden, aye. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Durkan.
Yes.
Council Durkan, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jean.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes.